Well, welcome to our June 27th Town Board meeting, Town of Rhinebeck, a regular Town Board meeting. Would everybody like to join me in the pledge? I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, individual with liberty, justice, for all. Okey dokey, we have a big agenda today, but we still have the public hearing open on our continuation of our local law public hearing from June 13th, 2022. I just want to poll the Town Board members, are we going to be working on this to consider the information that to consider expanding this, or are we still staying with this law?
Well, I think there are a bunch of changes we're going to need to make, so we ought to...
Ed, what do you think?
I think there's some changes too.
Chauncey? Alright, so I'm going to continue the public hearing. We're essentially going to be working on this law to continue some comments that we've received from, hold on, well, several comments, I think, from Alan and also from, somebody help me.
Was it Carson Powers?
Carson Powers.
Thank you, Carson Powers, to look to be able to expand solar fields for community solar use. So I guess we could take comments, but they're kind of moot, or they will be moot, because we're, I think, going to look at changing the law. So should I hold this over? Does anybody want to speak on this, knowing that we're doing that? Raise your hand if you do. Um, Joni, give me a date two months out. Hold on.
You have August 8th or September 12th? Want to go a little farther, September 26th?
No, I think September 12th sounds about right. What do you guys think?
It's fine, make sure. And we could move it in if we get it done.
Um, well, I don't think we can unless we renotice it. So considering it's summer and people are on vacation, um, do you want to do, we only have one meeting in August. I, uh, we could do August 8th and then just hold it over from there.
I, I, I think we're going to need September. We have a lot of issues to discuss, so I think that's safer to do that.
Okay, then, so, um, let's hold this open until September 12th. Did I get that right, Jon?
Yeah, so I have that on my calendar as a meeting date.
Okay, perfect. Um, the, is there, we are going to talk about host compliance. Do we need Warren and Jim here for that, or do you guys, would you like to stay for that, Warren and Jim?
Yeah, I actually like to hear that, so then I can go.
Uh, Jim, you're welcome to stay to go. I have Kester Bonso from Host Compliance Granicus here. I had an initial meeting with him last week and went over all the modules that Host Compliance offers to help us not only enforce short-term listings, but hi, Kester, but to collect data and to help us, help people register online. So Kester's going to give us a brief overview, and I'm going to ask that the board funds two modules now while we're working on developing our local law, because I think that the information we'll get from it will be very helpful. The two modules are the address and ID, and the second one is a 24/7 hotline for complaints. So it just seems common sense to have these while we're developing our local law. So thanks for coming, Kester, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I appreciate you setting aside the time to meet with me.
Of course.
Oh, me, um, I apologize, um, the...
Oh, we have to, hold on, we have to give you a, uh, we have to share the screen with you, I think. I know how to do that, just, no, I don't. Who does? Wait, I do. Now, can somebody give Kester?
Yeah, you, if you go next to his name on the participant list under more, next to his name, should be there.
It doesn't, it doesn't say that. It says chat, stop video, pin, spotlight for everyone, rename.
Then Sarah can do it.
Sarah, could you give it to Kester?
She's got to enable screen sharing.
Are you there, Sarah? Do you have it yet, Kester?
Yes, yes, it has been enabled.
Perfect. It only takes a minute.
Well, thank you for taking the time to learn a little bit more about Host Compliance. A lot of communities are dealing with relatively similar problems, but the solutions tend to be different based off of the regulatory structure around short-term rentals. For a lot of communities, it comes down to how do we engage with these individuals in a way that we can build a structured system that doesn't discourage or villainize these individuals, but keeps them inside of a compliant structure where the externalities that come with short-term rentals are a lot easier to manage. In a lot of the data that we've analyzed at Host Compliance, when it comes down to Airbnb's VRBOs, these types of short-term rental programs being active in communities, we found overwhelmingly that there's about a 10% voluntary compliance rate, and that becomes problematic for a lot of communities because they are responsible for clearing the delta between that 10% voluntary and the 100% that they're hoping for with the creation of a regulation. It only tends to get more complicated for a number of communities that I've worked with, because the size of the short-term rental market tends to grow by 20 to 30% year-over-year. That leads to some realistic impacts for the communities that we tend to serve, such as increases in complaints around short-term rental noise, or a diverse number of platforms with Airbnb being worth nearly $100 billion. Multiple platforms can be active inside of a community, but it tends to be wildly inefficient as far as the use of time and effort to try and track every single platform individually, which requires most communities to just drill down on one and hope that they're getting most of the units available. As a result, for a lot of the communities that we speak to, that results in lost economic opportunities from either permitting fees or a lack of rooming taxes being remitted, diminished neighborhood character in the form of complaints from individuals who are residing near these short-term rentals, dealing with the friction that comes between long-term residents and short-term hosts. For a lot of communities with a limited housing supply, it tends to result in impact in where people can even afford to live and work in a community if the majority of the available housing supply is being consumed by investors to create new short-term rentals. And last and definitely not least, it's rarely an efficient process, so most communities are looking to well-regulate these short-term rentals, but in a manner that doesn't require too much time or money on their part, because most of them tend to be, well, busy with a number of responsibilities prior to short-term rentals. So, we were able to run a scan of your community for the month of June, and at that time, we found about 54 active short-term rental units with 88 listings. The diversity of platforms that I mentioned before kind of feeds into the fact that most individuals who list short-term rentals have started to figure out that it makes more sense financially to list on many platforms as opposed to just one, but that tends to create a difficulty for regulations, because if the individuals aren't all on the same platform, you're going to have to extend staff time and effort into checking multiple platforms for redundancies. At Host Compliance, we want to consolidate a lot of that effort and automate this process, feeding it to you in dashboard or a map format similar to what you're seeing now. But going beyond that, we also want to aggregate the data around the individuals operating in your community, an understanding of what is the median value that they're generating, what home types, depending on your regulations and zoning, are being used to carry out these activities, and even an understanding of whether or not the individual is on-premise within the 16% in your community right now, or 83% unhosted, which is the other large portion of individuals operating in your community now. Because Granicus serves about 2,500 clients in the government, we have a lot of experience when it comes to everything from meetings, agenda management, delivery and messaging, and records management. But one of the biggest issues that a lot of communities have seen post-COVID has been an influx of individuals using short-term rentals to escape densely populated areas. The only problem is that your staffing and time did not increase with the inflow of new individuals. So a lot of communities have looked at Host Compliance to cover that gap. First and foremost, address identification. That's the service that will scan your community and scan those multiple platforms, basically scanning over 60 different short-term rental platforms, taking publicly available information, matching the publicly available information on houses to the short-term rental listings, combining that data and having it human-verified on our end, and generating and simple-to-use user interface, where you're going to understand based on your coding requirements, compliance status, whether a unit is compliant or non-compliant based on where they're operating, or whether or not they're permitted, the number of new units that need to be informed about the short-term rental compliance structure, and the total number of active units, as well as some data about the total number of units available in the community. What we tend to find is people who list in June may not be the same people who list in December, so capturing the aggregate total of everyone over the course of the year makes it much simpler to ensure that they're abiding by your compliance standards, and then being able to drill down to individual unit levels, understanding their active status, if they've been identified, if they're compliant, which platforms they're listed on, the housing type, let's say, minimum night stay, and even a timeline of activities, giving you a granular understanding of the day-to-day changes that occur to a property, including the documented stays that occur. All of this data can be shared and distributed to the individual members of your team, and that provides the basis of Host Compliance, which is our address identification. Now, the other module of interest that I was able to discuss with Elizabeth was the 24/7 hotline. After you've been able to identify these individuals, oh, I apologize, was someone asking a question?
Elizabeth, you're muted.
Oh, okay. Building on top of the ability to identify an individual unit and determine its compliance status, for many communities, understanding data around the complaints of short-term rentals is typically required. So we've developed the 24/7 hotline, which is meant to take in complaints around short-term rentals, also adding proof, which will be submitted by the person issuing an individual complaint, allowing us to offer a resolution and notification to the individual that filed the initial complaint, that the situation's been resolved. All of this data can be used to attribute complaints to individual addresses by complaint type, basically giving you data that can inform how you develop your short-term rental ordinance based on the impact that short-term rentals are having in your community now. Now, those were the two modules of immediate interest, address identification, the base model, and rental act, I'm sorry, the 24/7 hotline. Now, Host Compliance comes with a number of other modules, such as compliance monitoring, which is meant to simplify engagement and physical letter sending with the individuals operating these short-term rentals, permitting and registration as a portal where individuals can submit the required information and documents, as well as e-sign for the application of a permit on the back end, giving you the ability to approve or deny that permit. Tax collection is not necessarily that important for what your structures.
That's for the county.
Yep. Um, but the 24/7 hotline, giving you the ability to manage those complaints, and rental activity monitoring, whether or not you, as a community, are interested in tracking the number of days active that an individual has offered their property throughout the year, as well as revenue estimates for how much that individual has generated, depending on your local policy. But the entire idea is we've taken the issues that most commonly impact communities looking to regulate short-term rentals, we've designed solutions to drive the outcomes those communities would like, and then you can kind of mix and match the pieces of Host Compliance that accomplish your goals when you need to have them accomplished, or you can add on individual modules as you tend to grow into that need. I don't want to spend too much time rambling now, and I would like to open up the floor for anyone that has a question.
Great. Town Board members, do you have any questions or comments? What I'm going to ask for later in the day is that we approve the, um, address identification and 24/7 hotline immediately, so that we can get the information. We'll have information coming in as we develop our law, and people who have complaints can start logging them in. Kester, you think it takes about 90 days for that to get fully up to speed?
Typically, we could probably get that in place sooner, but I always do use that as the estimate, but because it always depends on how many individuals are onboarding at the time that you have signed in onboarding.
Sure, and it's a yearly fee, but will you charge us monthly? Do we have to sign up for a year, or is it monthly?
Uh, the fee structure is typically annually.
Okay. All right, so the county won't pay for it until we enact our local law, but so they, they will probably pro, prorate it or pick it up after we enact our local law. In any event, it's, it's not a ton of money. It's under $5,000 for a year. Also, anecdotally, I want to say that while you have captured 55 in June, and the numbers were up in the 70s in 2021, anecdotally, we know that many of these short-term rentals have come off the market during COVID and have been written out, but rented out for longer term. In Rhinebeck, if you look at estates, seasonal residential, residential multiple, multiple residences and residences with commercial use or ag use, we only have about six, under 16, 15, 1600 housing units in the town outside the village. So 5 to 10% are being rented out as short-term rentals.
I have a question.
Thank you.
The town has a noise ordinance. If people, if people call to complain about noise, does it, do you care whether it's from a...
I, I had the same thought, Alan, and I figured we could speak to Kester about this offline, to use this noise complaint to 24/7 for other purposes. But since we're just talking about this for short term, can we keep it there and talk to Kester offline about that?
Okay, I just need a yes or a no.
Sure.
I, simple answer is no, because typically, our primary focus is short-term rentals and attributing, let's say, calls, complaints around short-term rentals to the individual units that are active that we've identified in our system. Units that are, exist outside of that atmosphere, I think it'd be a lot more difficult to coordinate record-keeping around those units.
Thank you.
Thanks, good.
Anybody else have any questions? Chauncey?
I have a couple. I assume that we would want our short-term renters, the property owners, in some fashion, probably through permit fees and so forth, to cover our expenses. Is that a fair assumption? I'm putting that to my fellow board members, and then if the answer is yes, would Granicus be helping us structure that?
Well, just from the numbers I ran, and we haven't decided fees, this is going to cost us, after the county kicks in, about $5,000 a year. Additionally, we'll have more time in our, with our code enforcement officer, or whoever we decide is, is doing that, and we'll have more fire inspections, which people will pay for. So I, I don't see this as an issue. If we charge, you know, 300, a $300 fee, and we have, you know, 100 rentals, I think we're fine.
Our costs will be covered.
Yes.
Okay. The other question, Kester, you mentioned the, as many as 60 public platforms for listings. Why would it not make sense for a municipality, in particular, of course, Rhinebeck, to require the property owners who are doing short-term rentals to only list on a handful, or even only one platform, so that it becomes much easier to keep track of what they're doing?
Oh, um, to, to be quite honest, it, it is very difficult to get, not difficult, let me find the right words for this. Some of the time, people do not follow the rules, is what I found overwhelmingly. They, they must be drag, they must be escorted sternly toward the direction of rules. So limiting the number of platforms individuals can list on, it's only effective if you can track down and catch them on those other platforms that are not supposed to be on.
Oh, sure. There'd have to be some monitoring, and if the penalty for catching them where they're not supposed to be, would it be, for example, if they lose their permit, I don't know if it'd be worth the trouble, but that question occurred to me.
I think one of the biggest problems is there are a lot of communities that do put rules in place, but it turns into not what the rules are, but how can you enforce them? Because if you can't drive enforcement, then you're probably not necessarily going to get the results you want from the construction of that policy. Oh, and speaking of which, I had an opportunity to speak with Elizabeth about this. We do have a consultant who's helped many communities when it comes to refining their policy and driving effective use cases, based on his experience, having worked with so many communities, and particularly our clients, that we were, that we are able to offer an hour of free consulting time to review a draft ordinance that you do propose, to see if there are any issues that other communities have encountered that could be avoided with probably fine-tuning or refining some wording around the short-term rental policy and desired outcomes.
Thank you.
So, anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Kester, how was Warren, the attorney for the town, how does your service integrate with enforcement in terms of if you cannot resolve a complaint? How does that go from you to enforcement?
Oh, um, you can kind of select it, kind of like a, an escalation path. First, it's going to go to us. If we cannot resolve it, then the next person that you designate, whether that be code compliance, police, you can choose a chain of escalations around an issue. So it does not have to only be contained within our system there. That's when we can hand that off to an individual who can be more impactful locally.
And it's all documented, so it, all the complaints are documented. So if it has to go to a court case, we have videos and audio files that have been uploaded to Host Compliance as evidence.
We require, we can send a link to the smartphone of the individual that files the initial complaint and give them the ability to create that evidence and then submit it and attach it to the address that they're complaining about.
Anybody else? Since in Dutchess County, I think Mylan is using this, Redhook is using this, City of Beacon is using this. So there are communities around us that have enacted, oh, the village is using it of Rhinebeck. There are communities around us who are enacting these short-term rental laws, and I'll repeat again, that currently, short-term rentals are not allowed in Rhinebeck. They are illegal. They are not in our use table. So effectively, we would be allowing them under only certain circumstances.
Elizabeth, while we're on the subject, do you want to pass the resol, ask for...
Hold on, I'm just going to answer a question here. Even if we don't get involved with collecting taxes, is there a way to see what tax revenue is being lost slash potentially lost? Kara, I would say that you could talk to the Dutchess County, you know, the head of their fight. This has nothing to do with us. It's, it's room tax. The county gets 3%, we get nothing. I have been saying I'd like to get Kevin Cahill to carry an amendment for us, so that we could get room, a share of room tax as well. But I think that's a question for the county department of, of, sure, you're welcome, for their financial department. Yeah, any other questions for Kester? All right, I'm going to go then to, uh, item to Resolution 2022-158. I've got such a meaty thing here. Just give me a second while I find it. Joni's meetings are awesome. Community Solar, sorry, bear with me. Getting there. Resolution 2022-258, which is incorrect. I'd like to amend that to 158. Agreement with Host Compliance for short-term rental monitoring and enforcement. I will make a motion. Can I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. So, Kester, thank you. If you could be in touch, or whoever, be in touch with the clerks and get us started as soon as possible on the information ID and the 24/7 hotline complaint. I am now empowered to sign a contract with you.
Fantastic. I can get to generating it, and I can follow up with you tomorrow with a completed document as far as being ready to sign.
Thanks so much for your help.
Awesome. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me and listen to me ramble. I appreciate that.
No, it sounds very helpful. So, thank you. Alan, and, uh, and what's your name? Jim, while you're still here, did you want to participate in just, or listen to the discussion that the board is having about the parameters for short-term listings? I'm assuming, yeah. Okay, we're going out of order, guys, because we have Warren here. The last page of your packet is a sort of revised short-term rental zoning considerations for the Town Board. We discussed this at our last meeting, and I revised this with input from the Town Board. So we've just signed up with Granicus for the address identification and the 24/7 hot permitting hotline. And I'm assuming that once we pass our local law, we'll sign up for all the modules except for tax collection, which the county will do. Um, we, at our last meeting, talked about only allowing certain property classifications rather than zones to be allowed for rental. And what we talked about was only allowing one-family residences, one-family residences with apartments, rural residences, rural residences with agriculture and estates. So that's, I have that in the information. It's, oh, if you total it up, it's four, it's, it doesn't quite, it's 1,500 residences, and this is all for outside the town. So we wouldn't allow condos and co-ops and apartments and multifamily houses to have short-term rentals in them. And that's something that's Warren, I've talked to Dutchess County Department of Planning, and they don't see why we can't do it like this. So that's something for Jim and Warren to consider. Also, with regard to Rhine Cliff, Rhine Cliff has no zoning by right. Everything is done with a special use permit. So we talked about only allowing the approved property classifications to go through a special use permit in Rhine Cliff, so that it's consistent with their current land use. If you build anything in Rhinebeck, you have to go to the planning board for a site plan review and a special use permit. Um, if you build anything in Rhinebeck, you have to go to the planning board for a site plan review and a special use permit. So for consistency, the same would be done in this, Jim and Warren?
Yeah, sounds fine.
Okay, um, we are saying that only a domicile or permanent resident. Um, can be rented out. An occupied owner, it has to be your domicile. You cannot own a second home. You have to be, uh, you can't own multiple homes. You can only rent out your primary residence, your domicile. We are um saying that we will permit the uh accessory structures on a property. Any apartments or bedrooms within your domicile to be rented out whenever you want. Um, we are also looking at a time period, say, um, you know, um. Say, uh, someone goes away for three months in the winter. We will allow them to rent out their domicile, their primary residence for a time period. At short term rentals with a, um, what do you call that person? A manager, a?
A manager, property manager.
Obviously, it can't be six months because if it was six months, it wouldn't be your domicile. So I guess we'll look at tax codes and other guidance for what. Is right for that and come up with some parameters. Um, we're also saying that uh if you own two parcels. Um, and your primary domicile is on one and you have another parse, you know, home on the adjacent parcel. You cannot rent out the adjacent parcel, um, because it's not your primary domicile. Um, we are saying that there's no allowance for pre-existing short term rentals because they're currently not legal. So how could we go back and say, okay, you can do this if they're not legal? Obviously, we need to roll out the regulations and phase in a grace period. We don't know what that is. We will require a permit. I don't think a site plan review except in Rhine Cliff. Um, we will require um a code enforcement officer or someone. Visits or affirms the information. Fire inspections are mandatory, off-street parking, garbage removal, all that stuff will have to be ironed out. So we don't know what the parameters of the permits are, but we're gathering information. Um, we also want to look at providing more flexibility to encourage short term rentals on farms for agrotourism. And we'll look at all the farms in the town. And obviously, if you have a farm, there there's a dairy farm, there's five horse farms. It's all broken out in our code and I. I I did in our assessing and I did, uh, I think provide that at one time. You know, we'll look and say, i- if you have a farm, you could rent out there to promote agrotourism. But we'll come up with guidelines for minimum acreage and all that. Also, um, we want to consider short term rentals as they relate to wedding and event venues. Because weddings and events are an important economical source here of income. And there are a couple around that may not be owned as a primary residence. So can they be allowed to do this in conjunction with weddings? And we'll look at how that would affect neighbors and in which districts they're in. Um, we had set a maximum of three bedrooms with two occupants per bedroom, and I don't know what we want to do about that. I think if it's hosted and it's your primary domicile and you were there, you know, ma- maybe we throw that out the window. Because we're more, being more um rigid with everything else. Uh, permitting filing fees to be decided. We have to define violations and fines for violations. And um, I think that's about all at this point. Town board members, comments, additions, questions, concerns?
Yeah.
Warren, Jim, questions?
Well, not nothing tonight. I'll be piping in as we move forward with the process. I will have some comments, but we'll discuss that in our meetings.
Okay, terrific. Um, any members of the public here have any comments or questions about the direction we're going in here? Okay, uh, moving on, I want to say, uh, good night and thank you to Warren and Jim.
Good night, everybody.
I thank you and. Okay, um, all right, going out of, uh, all right, um. I just wanted to update uh from our uh citizen zoning and comprehensive plan advisory committee. Um, Sally Mazzarella resigned as co-chair, as did uh Linda. Um, we did receive a, um, so both of our chairs have resigned. And um, we did receive a rec- a recommendation from the chairs that we. Look at uh redoing our two thousand seven Hudsonia study. Um, I called Victor after I got the recommendation. Um, the board had not called Hudsonia. I'm sorry, Eric Kivya. Um, Eric Kivya does not recommend a total redo of the two thousand seven study. He said, why would you want to do that? Uh, just because it's old doesn't mean it's not, um, doesn't serve its purpose and it would cost a whole lot of money. So Eric is talking to Gretchen. Um, they did the original study and to see what ideas they could come up with with. Uh, with updating Hudsonia that wouldn't cost us two hundred thousand dollars and to see what is necessary. Uh, also, you know, I think that there's less of an appetite now. I talked to several large owners for. Letting Hudsonia on their property, private property. So again, Hudsonia does not recommend a full redo of the two thousand seven study. And Eric uh is going to come back and Gretchen are going to come back with us with what they do recommend. Now, we are sort of run, not ru- we don't have chairs now, but what we do have is an amazing group of nine. Were um real, Kara is here, um, really good uh and volunteers who seem to be really engaged. And we do need help with looking at what we're going to do uh to protect the integrity of our rural roads. And the walkability and bike riding, you know, the mixed use of our rural roads as we grow. And and how we're going to expand or include uh environmental and sustainability concerns. Within our um comprehensive plan. Do you guys have any thoughts on this?
Uh, I have a question or a comment, or maybe it's even a suggestion, I'm not sure. Our two chairs having um resigned, should we proceed for a while letting Kathy Ember? Still steer the ship and see how it goes and let it go at that for a month or two or till the end of the year?
What do you guys think?
Is that something she wants to do?
Yeah, it's something she wants to do and it's something that she does. Um. Kathy and Kara is here. She's offered to um step up. I just think that um, Alan, do you have any comments or?
No, I think we should, if people want to do the job, we should let them do the job, see how it goes.
Okay, so should we just stick with Kathy for a little bit and see if we can. Wrangle in everybody. I think that the committee got ahead of itself a little bit and started looking at. Local laws. I think they really have to go back to the comp plan after talking to 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 um. To um. Jim Levy and Kathy Ember, um, and and focus on. I mean, I don't even know if everyone's aware of what we've already really accomplished. We have, we're almost towards a silver level of for. Um, climate smart community. We've constantly been updating um our practices and. Initiatives, so we just need to sort of draw it all together. If we could get our environmental coordinator back, David Chernak, that's something else to consider with him working. But why don't we give it a little bit of time, Kara, with you sort of, you know, you're here with the with the committee. Um, have your next couple of meetings and see how it goes, but we we need help with this and we'd like, um. We'd like to figure it out.
So I'm, if I may, we, uh, I know with the duration of the committee is only through the end of this year at this point. So we don't want to waste too much time. Uh, because because I think there is a greater need for back and forth between the various parties. Simply because there is so much history and so much has already been done. Um, and uh, you know, I which I have learned in the last, in the last few weeks. Sort of wading through all the documents that we were, that we were given. Um. What I, I think having Kathy lead the initiative could be really helpful. Uh, for getting the results in the short amount of time that we have to do what we've been tasked to do.
And I mean, we get to December and you guys are like, we need more more time, you know?
Right, right.
Something we're, we need help with. Um, and it's also, oh, go ahead.
No, so sorry, Elizabeth. I got excited.
Just, yeah, me too. Um, uh, it's also hard to get Pete, like to get a recommendation of redo the. Two hundred thousand dollar Hudsonia. It was, it was shocking to me because I, I think a holistic approach would work best. Not to get a a recommendation in June to do this and then a recommendation in August to do this. And one in September, a holistic thing, you know, maybe you you guys will say, look, we think you should hire a um. A planning um firm to come up with a comprehensive road in it, you know. Who knows, but you know, and how much is it going to cost? So it has to be a part of our budget process and we do have funds for this, but we need to be mindful and I think look at it holistically. Does anybody have uh else have comments? Kara, do you have more comments?
I just, I just wanted to say, I think, I think the spirit of the request about the Hudsonia report. Um, was that so much is based on that two thousand seven report? And here we are in two thousand twenty-two, looking at the comprehensive plan, recognizing that climate has changed. All sorts of things and I think that, and and so, so A, it would give us a sort of a progress report since two thousand and seven. And highlight areas that are kind of in jeopardy in particular to help inform our thinking about the comprehensive plan. So uh, while I do agree that um, the sort of, oh, you know, let's, let's do this big thing. With no, with no preamble, I think what was the wrong way to go about it, but I I just want you to understand sort of the spirit of of the request.
I I do understand. I was just floored that no one talked to Eric Kivya either. Because you reached out or reached out to me or Melody, you know, Sally knows this too. She, there's a lot of, um, or Michael Trimble, there's a lot of institutional knowledge. I know I just called. Eric had picked up the phone and he's like, why would you want to do that? And so, you know, there's. I understand the enthusiasm and I'm grateful for it and it's not a big deal.
Right, no, but I think I I I think it would be great. I would love to be able to have some preliminary. I, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Well, I would, I think we should have some interaction with Kathy before we keep meeting.
Sure, I mean, we're, you know.
That's possible.
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, uh, Jim left early, whi- which was silly. Um, but you know, we'll iron it out. As I said, let's figure it out together and you know, we're willing to pay for her time. She doesn't have unlimited time for us, but she said she can support this project, so I take her at her word. Anybody else? Melanie, I see you. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, great, thank you, Karen, and thanks to the whole group. Um, you know, we realize that uh we need help. So we are grateful. Um.
Will you share that out then to the committee members?
Share, yes.
What, what, just that what we just, okay.
Tomorrow. Um, okay, we're not, we've, we've tabled um. Twenty twenty-two, one fifty-three approving local law for solar energy. We're going back to the drawing board. We're good on item three, uh, two, item three. I'll make a motion for twenty twenty-two, one fifty-nine for our, for our. Preliminary accounts payable extracts. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Um, are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'll make a motion for uh. Resolution twenty twenty-two, one sixty for our capital projects abstracts. May I have a second? Thanks, Ed. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Um. Let me, uh, we've done our short term rentals. I just wanted to update you guys on the skate park and the turf field update. I see David Ping is here. I now know that you're the new chair of Winnicke, so thanks for coming, Dave. Um, um, Clark Companies did a uh. Board test and a soil test last week at the park with our engineer, Christian Paggy. And uh Padgy and um. Clark's drawings. Needed to amend um the former drawings. Who are they? Not Ranger Cat? What was the former company? The company that originally did it? Because there was some issues with the SWIP. So they are redoing the um drainage portion. Clark is redoing the drainage portion of the plans with our engineer. That was not included in their original bid. They had thought it would cost up to two hundred thousand dollars more. But after doing the soil test, they don't think it's going to be that big of a deal. They are currently looking at uh the drawings and redesigning them. They will come back to us with a new set of drawings, David, uh, that also address the SWIP issues and any. Uh, rubble, crumb or crumb rubble. I always get them confused, which the SWIP is obviously in place to prevent that. Um, and then we will be able to finalize their bid and enter into a contract. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments about that? Also, Winnicke has asked for a meeting with me on Tuesday. I suggested a Zoom. Uh, uh, Josh is away. Next, next week, are any of you available to do this meeting with me or we'll settle that via email?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll I'll get a time and we'll settle it. I need another board member to meet with me and obviously if um Christian's available, I'll get him on too. Um, as far as the skate park goes, we had put sixty thousand dollars away for the skate park and. Um, uh. The skate park group was going to buy components and put them in an existing tarmac between the little. League field and the tennis courts, but it turns out that that existing tarmac needs to be resurfaced to the tune of, I think. Twelve thousand, maybe fifteen thousand. And the components that they would buy are not necessarily what they want in the end product. There are two types of skate parks. One is sort of like a concrete swimming pool, undulating thing. And the other are components. So uh, we've asked um the skate park committee to go back. To the skate park place to ask for two concepts. One for about an eight to ten thousand square foot concrete bowl and another for about an eight thousand square foot. Um, component park. Um, and for bids for both of those, we haven't gotten. They haven't gotten that from the vendors yet, so we're waiting for it. We'll get the concept sketches and ballpark numbers and we'll go ahead and have them designed. So that we're, uh, we have a final um pro- project in mind and we're, we're, we're funding that. Not funding something that can't be a part of the final project. Does that make sense? Um, okay, any questions or comments about that? Uh, Alan, I think you have some new business for the board.
I do. I sent you a resolution to hire Casey Shine as a, as a cashier.
Great. Do you have it in front of you? You want to read it or you want me to get my?
Well, it's so, it's, I, you should all have copies of it.
Yeah, I did. I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay, I'll read it. So resolution twenty twenty-two dash one sixty-one, summer twenty twenty-two recreation. Department hire, excuse me. Uh, whereas the recreation director has submitted the following hire for twenty twenty-two. Casey Shine pool attendant, start date would be six twenty-eight, end date nine five twenty twenty-two. There's a typo on it, by the way. Rate of pay thirteen dollars and twenty cents an hour. Uh, resolved that the above hires approved. Uh, the second cashier that we had basically found a different job.
Yeah, $13 an hour. I can't blame her, but we can discuss that later. Okay, there's a motion, may I have a second? Thanks, Chauncey. Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks, Dave, we're, we're excited too. And we'll decide on a time. Dave Ping just messaged me. I'll get a Zoom together, I'll get our engineer on there. We'll put it all on the table and figure out how to go forward. And Winnicke has the conservation easement on our park and so are an interested party in any development there. Thanks, David. Any other new business before the board?
I have two resolutions I submit.
Wow, surprise.
Well, they're simple ones. They're just to get rid of the old coolers, the over, old freezers, I should say, at the concession stand that are no longer usable. And also the cemetery benches, which nobody took, the old ones. We'd like to get rid of both the freezers and the benches. We need to get board approval for that.
Okay, a resolution to dispose of the freezers at the concession stand and the benches, the old benches at the, you have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Second, new business, Ed? Oh, okay, so they were together. Okay, Joan, you're looking at me, are we okay? All right, thanks. Any other public comment on any non-agenda items or agenda?
I have a comment on something that's not agenda, but I'll wait for the public if anybody else has anything to say.
Yeah, I have a question. I didn't, I made, I haven't, I was very surprised to hear about the Hamlet. And I can't do my job and keep up very well with the news, so I'm way behind. But I never, you know, we got the agenda on Friday to be here on Monday. This whole thing about the skate park being decided comes as a surprise to me. And Elizabeth, I didn't want to be a critic. From November was the last time we spoke on that great night in the repair clinic where everybody, what we said was Rhinebeck raises us. And everybody there in that room exemplified that. But everything, to me, everything about that night, I would just bring up, that night, you remember it was raining all that day? That night I went slashing down through the fields below the park pavilion in this rain. It was just, I'd, we'd been indoors all day and I was out free and clean and all that. And I thought only a rich person could be in such, such beautiful fields. But here in Rhinebeck, we had that chance. And everything, to my, to my opinion, everything that's been done since on that rec, those fields, that rec center, has made it uglier and more banal. To me, that, that park pavilion is a, is a conceit. Nobody who goes to walk, I never see any of you guys there walking. The, anybody who goes there to walk is bringing, needs refreshments. The people who needed refreshments are at the playground, the courts and the baseball field where parents and kids are. I, for example, was a member of a rugby team, an old boys' school, old boys' league in public schools around London. All of those pavilions, some of those fields were older than the United States. All of those fields, without, all of those pavilions, without exception, were welcoming. That field, that pavilion is a conceit. I mean, that field below it is perfectly drained. And, but he had, he makes, he strides the ridge with a building, this, these, there's no point in making criticism about things that are already done. That's why I didn't send you that letter. But to learn or to answer those questions or to bring them up to say, make those judgments or put them out is, has value. I didn't want to be a critic, that's why you didn't hear from. But that, that building strides the ridge with an out of balance, beautifully conceived drainage contraption above a perfectly drained field. On the other hand, imagine if instead of that, all that thing, you, well, first of all, you had it where people needed it. Second of all, when's the usage peaks for all those fields? In the afternoon going to evening. That building puts the hulk of its base between you and the sun. That thing is just for rain drain, from sheltering from the rain. Nobody gathers there ever. Imagine instead of that contraption drainage, which wasn't necessary, he would have just put a cedar deck with tables for people to gather. It's not where people gather, first of all, it's not faced toward the sun, second of all. And there's no provision for people to actually use it. Those are all, to my thinking, design flaws. So, so to bring, I never knew that the skating, remember, I was saying that the field down by the school might have been better because it was closer to kids and also it was closer to traffic? Because one of the great beauties of those rich man's fields is their peace and quiet. The benches you put up, how beautiful that is. A skate park is noisy. You know, again, I don't want to be the outsider, but there's no provision for people to think on their own in space, which Rhinebeck brings to us. That's my, that's my problem.
Thanks, Anil, thank you. We heard you. Anybody else have any comments?
I have the one item. Elizabeth, shall I go ahead?
Yeah.
Yesterday afternoon, beautiful afternoon, you recall, I was down at the park between four and five o'clock and I was parked at the far end, clear down by the playground. The place was really hopping, especially the swimming pool. Lots of people there. The parking lot was really full. As I left about five o'clock, I started up the proper side of the parking lot headed toward 308. And it was, there was so much going on that I, I just was progressing very slowly. Was a little bit worried about a child running out from between the cars or something. Sure enough, about 30 or 40 feet in front of me, a couple little girls, maybe seven and nine, something like that, went strolling across the exit row for automobiles. And, all right, they're children and why would they know to look and so forth? But then about six or eight strides behind them comes a young woman who I presume was their mother, paying absolutely no attention to them or the possibility of oncoming traffic. She was, had something in her hand, I presume it was a smartphone. Looked like she was sending emails or reading them. It was appalling. And if I had, if the timing had been different and I had been speeding, rushing, a tragedy is not an unthinkable thing. I, I, I'm relating this to make a suggestion that maybe we ought to, even though probably not much attention will be paid to it, maybe we ought to put something out in a newsletter on the website. Hey, folks, let's have a good summer, let's have a good Fourth of July weekend. Let's watch our children, especially around parking lots and the swimming pool, et cetera.
Thank you. Maybe we can also speak to Bob about some crosswalks in the parking lot or safe crossing areas.
That's an idea, yeah.
Let's get Bob involved. I know what you mean, it is bumping down there. And, you know, we, we have like a very, what, like a 10 or a 15 mile an hour speed limit down there? But there's more we can do. Thanks. Eleanor, I see you have your hand raised, how are you?
Hi, just wanting to say that I second the gentleman who spoke about the park because I used to live in this place called Boomville, New York. And I went up there this spring and I, you know, I don't go up there a lot anymore. And they have a park there and it's not as big as our park. But I was just struck by how everything was so harmonious and it was just an inviting place. And the, the structures were just, you know, nicely built and there was a little bridge over the water and it was just really picturesque. And, you know, I would think that at some point, instead of just building helter-skelter, we could maybe get somebody to come in and come up with a vision for the our park and, you know, make it a little bit more united and, you know, make it, make it like he said, a place where, you know, you really can come and enjoy the beauty. That, so, like he said, I didn't want to complain all the time. But after I saw that park, I even took some pictures if anybody's ever interested. I was amazed and impressed. I don't know where they got the money from because it's a poor community, but it is really a nice place. Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Anybody else? Joan, we've got all our business done, I think. Everybody, thank you for coming. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Good night, everybody, we'll see you in a little while.
Night, all.
Bye.